Dea colleagues, let's begin please with our meeting here. Colleagues, the Committee on Transport and Tourism is holding a hearing on the impact of Brexit on aviation. The purpose of this hearing is to hear what the Heidelberg experts from the airports, from the tourism industry and from the aircraft industry have to say about this, to know how the aviation players are dealing with this period of uncertainty in the wake of Brexit and what are the impacts that they've already identified. So what will the impact of Brexit be in this sector? Now, when it comes to our committee, we worry about the economic well-being of economic operators as well as the labor standards of workers and to ensure the free movement naturally of European citizens, which is why we wanted to enter into this dialogue. We want to talk to the experts constructively, you experts ladies and gentlemen. So we are doing our job when here in this wonderful house we go into matters seriously, transparently, with the view to address some of the concerns flowing from Brexit. So this is the first time in the history of the EU that a member state has decided to leave the EU. And this is why this hearing is the first of four major hearings when it comes to the UK, an island country. So we want to know what its impact is going to be in the maritime sector, also when it comes to land transport, be it road or rail. And then we'll wind up with a special focus on the staff and passengers in all the modes of transport covered by our committee. So that's the plan. When it comes to this hearing, it's split up into two parts. Part one, we are going to be hearing from the representative of three major EU airports: Heathrow in London, Charles de Gaulle in Paris and the airport of Dublin. They're all different. And the second part will be involving the aviation, tourism and airline sector, Lufthansa, AIG, et cetera. And we'll also have the representative from Airbus. And we will of course have discussions with the MEPs present here. So first, we're going to hear from the experts, first and foremost, the representative of the airports. Then we'll have a discussion, then we'll move on to part two of the meeting with the airlines. So I'd just like to leave it at that. But before I do close, it's essential that your presentations of each of our experts be well focused on the impact of Brexit. We would ask you to really stick to the key issue, the impact. So to each of our speakers, our experts, I would like to welcome most heartily to our committee. Thank you for having accepted our invitation. Thank you for being here this afternoon and sharing your thoughts. So we're delighted to see you here. And given how many of you there are, you may appreciate knowing that we expect you to wind up within five and seven minutes. And I tend to keep a pretty close eye on the clock, so watch it. So I'd like to give the floor to Mr. Kai. You are in charge. Where are you? You are in charge of Heathrow Airport. So thanks again and welcome again. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you members for inviting me here today. I'm John Holland-Kay, I'm the chief executive of Heathrow Airport. I'm also a board member of ACI Europe, which represents over 500 airports in 45 European countries. And my views here represent a common position agreed by ACI Europe. To start with, I believe that the approach to Brexit has to be seen through the eyes of passengers, normal hard-working citizens of the EU27 and the UK. Heathrow is the largest hub airport in Europe. We are an important base for UK carriers such as BA and Virgin, as well as EU airlines such as Lot, TAP, Tarom and Aegean, and global airlines such as China Southern and Garuda Indonesia. This year, we will serve approximately 77 million passengers and around a third of those will be coming from the EU27. Now, they may be coming to do business in the UK, to study, traveling for leisure, or they may be connecting on to one of over 80 long-haul destinations, some of which are not served by any other airport in Europe. Now, some long-haul flights to emerging markets are only viable because of a combination of a strong originating and destination market such as London and connecting passengers from all across the EU. And this allows all of us in Europe to benefit from the regular convenient flights all over the world that we are used to. Heathrow is also one of Europe's biggest ports, with goods connecting through it in the same way as people. And in fact, aviation provides the trading links for many of Europe's fastest-growing export sectors. Anything high-value with a short shelf life or a short supply chain typically travels by air, particularly over long distances. And they typically travel in the hold of a passenger plane. So think about pharmaceuticals, donated organs, high-tech electronics, goods that are not just critical to the future of the European economy, but which also have a huge benefit to society. So aviation is not just another economic sector. It is the enabler for all other sectors. It allows someone with a small business in Tallinn to trade with customers in London, for students from Warsaw to get to Oxford, for hoteliers in the Spanish costas to welcome millions of British tourists. The single aviation market has made Europe closely integrated culturally and economically. And for example, flights from the UK to Spain represent almost a third of all UK residents' trips to Europe by air. And they are a major contributor to Spain's largest economic sector, as well as giving hard-working Brits a taste of Spanish culture and a suntan. The single European aviation market has been one of the greatest successes of the European project and has supported the growth of regional economies across Europe. It has reduced the cost of air travel for hundreds of millions of us. It's the reason a small businesswoman can now fly from Gdansk to Newcastle or Girona to Glasgow, routes that would not have been possible and at prices that would not have been dreamed of before the single aviation market. This is something that you can be proud of and that we all need to protect for the benefit of the EU27 as well as UK citizens. However, politicians on both sides of the negotiation tell us that we should prepare for no deal for aviation. Now, what does that mean? Well, even though aviation is essential to trade, there is no World Trade Organization agreement to fall back on, as there is for other sectors. We are told that we should go back to the status quo before 1973, before the fall of the Berlin Wall, before low-cost carriers brought competition and choice. Does that mean that former Eastern Bloc countries, including parts of Germany, have little or no access to the fifth-largest economy in the world? Does it mean that without airlines being able to operate all freedoms of access, there will be less connections for small businesses between the UK and EU27 regional cities? That we will have fewer British tourists spending their money in Spain, Italy, France and Greece? Don't let it happen. A cliff-edge scenario is entirely avoidable. It would be a colossal failure of leadership on all parties to the negotiation if they can't agree a deal on aviation. The consequences would be felt immediately by the people you represent. No deal would mean that politicians have failed their citizens, taxpayers and voters. And actually, it's not enough to wait until the end of the Brexit process to strike a deal. Terms and conditions for physical goods sold after Brexit, for delivery in March 2019, are protected, but not air tickets. And yet, it is not long before EU citizens will start buying air tickets for April 2019. Now, we all know that business relies on certainty to make investment decisions and to recruit new people. We need negotiators to reduce uncertainty and build confidence for passengers, helping not just airlines and airports in their forward planning, but tourist businesses, universities, exporters, in fact, pretty much every other economic sector in Europe. This could be achieved by prioritizing aviation in phase two of the Article 50 negotiations and agreeing a transition arrangement in 2018 that maintains today's arrangements as far as possible. Looking forward, we must also strive to keep market access between the UK and EU27 as open and competitive as possible. We all want the UK to remain as closely integrated and aligned as possible to the single EU aviation market. So let us not lose sight of the people who matter most in this negotiation. The interests of citizens, of passengers, should be our priority, both during and after negotiations. They should be able to plan, travel and do business seamlessly and without disruption or increased costs. This committee can use its influence to make sure that this happens. I look forward to taking your questions and working with you and my industry colleagues to help to deliver this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holland-Kay. Perfect timing, thank you. Now, Mr. Tolland. You are in charge of Dublin's airport. So welcome to the Transport Committee.
For having me, my name is Kevin Tolland. I'm the chief executive of DAA, which runs Dublin Cork Airport in Ireland. I'm also an ACI board member. Ireland is critically exposed... Sorry, move to the next slide. Ireland is critically exposed and dependent on air access. Ninety percent of our access to the island is by air, 78 percent from the UK. And in Dublin Airport, which last year was Europe's fastest-growing major airport and second in the prior two years, we're critically dependent on air access from the UK. We serve 23 airports and 30 percent of our connecting passengers are through the UK. And Dublin-London is the busiest single air route in Europe. Cork Airport, our second airport in the south of Ireland, we serve 13 UK airports and we have a dependency of 58 percent on UK traffic. Next slide. On the next slide, clearly you can see since the Open Skies started that the number of intra-EU city pair routes has gone up by five-fold and also the number of routes with more than two carriers has gone up by tenfold. And you can also see Dublin Airport's traffic, the top right-hand corner, has gone up by similar proportions from 5 million passengers pre-liberalization to nearly 28 million passengers last year. And that has delivered huge benefits for Ireland. Next slide. Huge benefits. You can see our route network has grown from 36 routes to 127 routes across that period with cheaper, far deeper connectivity. If we move to the next slide, you can see that the UK has caused this problem by deciding to leave and 53 percent of UK traffic is to and from the EU. However, Ireland, of all the EU nations, is most exposed with 39 percent of all our traffic in and out of the UK. On the other hand, you can see Germany and France, who are going to be two of the key negotiators, have six or seven percent of their air traffic in and out of the UK. So clearly, when it gets into the negotiation, we think it's one that's very, very uneven when it comes to aviation. And Ireland in particular is potentially going to be very badly exposed. Next slide. If you look across Europe, the regional airports are the most exposed to this cliff. And if you look at the very high percentages of airports that are dependent on UK traffic, those regional airports that are most exposed financially and where air access is most important are in a very, very difficult position. Next slide. If you look over the last 25 years, there's a very strong correlation between UK GDP trends and UK air travel. Right now, we know that nobody's suggesting that the UK economy is going to improve after Brexit. And that's before the impact of any Single Skies problem comes to bear. So we think it's very, very negative. For Ireland, 42 percent of our tourists come from the UK and 44 percent of our business trips are to and from the UK. Next slide. Tourism is a key industry for us. One in 10 people almost are employed in tourism. It's over a billion euros of an industry between Ireland and the UK. However, it's not limited to that. One, we depend on the UK for tourists coming in and are critically exposed, as that will weaken going forward. Secondly, Ireland also competes with the UK for tourists. Ireland really is competing with Scotland, Wales, Lake District, Cornwall, Devon. And we think that's going to be very, very severely impacted potentially as we go forward. Next slide. You can see that 75 to 80 percent of our traffic is leisure-related to and from the UK. And we think that's discretionary and potentially going to be negatively impacted. Next slide. A lot of people say this is all imaginary, it's all in the future, it's not going to happen. We think it's an iceberg. Whilst our passenger numbers so far for the half-year were up 6 percent, what that really is disguising is the fact that inbound trips from the UK are down 7 percent and falling like a stone. So our good performance in outbound as the Irish economy picks up, as North American and Middle Eastern and European business works well, is disguising the fact that there's already the first Brexit-related decline happening. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Key actions, there are five key actions. We've got a key challenge, which is how do we maintain connectivity as the US and now the UK pulls back? So therefore, it's about making sure that we stay very actively connected as an island. We're the furthest part of the EU after Brexit from the rest of the EU. We're also pushing on with key infrastructure developments, such as our new northern parallel runway in Dublin. Secondly, and critically important, is that the Single Skies remain. We think there is a cliff hang ahead of us. We're very, very concerned. There was March 19, feels like it's a long way away. I think from March 18, our customers are going to be deciding what, if anything, they're going to be prepared to sell or they're going to have to vote with their feet ahead of certainty. Next slide. Tourism and the free movement of people is critically important as well. We've got a common travel area that needs to be maintained. We have common visa arrangements with the UK. They need to be maintained. And Ireland, as a critical EU player and participant, needs to not be disadvantaged by these actions driven by the UK. So therefore, we think something like a Schengen arrangement on visas for Ireland would be appropriate. Fourthly, continued cooperation on safety and security and common standards is critical. The last thing we need is different arrangements, different costs, more complexity. And lastly, importantly, as a business, there are going to be opportunities, whether that's the relocation of EU agencies based in the UK to Ireland, which we're actively going after, for example, the European Medical Association, or the return of duty-free on domestic UK flights and ones going to and from Ireland. So we'd be looking for those advantages as well. So in summary, we're very concerned. We think there's a real danger. We're the most exposed of any of the EU countries that will remain. And we think it needs to be addressed urgently and clarity brought to bear. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tolland. Now, I'd like to give the floor to Mr. Goldennel, who's one of the representatives of the Charles de Gaulle Airport in Paris. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madame Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. So the chair was quite clear as to what she wanted to hear. So I'm going to try to keep it brief and to the point, not to reiterate what's been said. The Charles de Gaulle Airport is a member of the ACI as well. And I would like to take advantage of these few minutes to restate that, given the experience we've had now with 25 years of the single market in Europe. And just to backtrack a bit, let me give you a bit of background here. Thanks to the single market, Europe has progressed in a less drastic way than some other parts of the world. Because we've had these regulations that kicked off in the US and Europe has been able to build on its experience with the advantages we've now got via Europe. That is to say, a gradual buildup of the single market and of the Single Skies. We've had a gradual progression, which has enabled us to be in the happy position we're in at present. Now, the single market, at the end of the day, has meant that we've been able to create some very positive impacts on our economy when it comes to air transport. And the Charles de Gaulle Airport is a good example of that. Because it's an airport at present that has a main airline, Air France, KLM, that operates it as a hub. And that's thanks to the developments in Europe. But EasyJet is also a major client. And like other airlines, it too has benefited from the single market. And last but not least, if you look at what's been happening over the past 25 years, the single European market has made for alliances between airlines and also between airports with a view to developing air transport for the benefit of our customers, i.e. our passengers, as others have already mentioned. Because air transport has enabled people to open up to the world and vice versa. And our European passengers have benefited from air transport that is provided at very competitive prices. So the single market has made it possible to open up Europe for the world and vice versa and at the same time to give Europeans a taste for inter-European travel. So these benefits should be borne in mind. And when it comes to the negotiations and the offering, this should be at the forefront of everyone's mind. 30 percent of the passengers at Charles de Gaulle are catching a connecting flight. 30 percent of them are European and on their way to international travel as a result of our single market. So it's now a matter of going further than what we've achieved, say, so far. There's the regional airports in France, we have a number of them, and they've benefited from the single market. There's some connections that have been established by foreign airlines and that have made it possible for these provincial airports to have connections with other countries. So it's good for passengers, it's good for employment and all those working at airports and those who live from the activity generated by airports. Tourism, of course, has to be borne in mind. And then the spin-off activities. And when it comes to cargo logistics, there too. That is all, all that activity is thanks to the single market. So once we've looked at the past to see how far we've come, my main message when it comes to the future and the impact of Brexit would be to say that we've collectively built up what we have in Europe. And now, there's a lot of uncertainty when it comes to these negotiations. And that's something the air transport industry doesn't like. Because it's got to have rules that are clear, they have to be future-proof. And we don't want any drastic impact naturally. When it comes to airports or the ACI, we plead that those who are going to be parties to this very complicated negotiation to establish rules as clear as possible, as early as possible. Because time for airports, for operators at airports, for airlines, they need as much time as possible to adapt to the new rules. So that's the challenge facing us. And to finish, just to say that there's a world that needs time, at least a year to adjust to new rules that may flow from Brexit. So thank you very much, Madame Chair. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much for those talks. We'll give the floor to the group coordinators now. They have a limited period of time. That's right, Mr. van der Kamp. Limited period of speaking time. Three minutes. You can ask your questions and then I'll take one speaker per political group to ask another question. Mr. van der Kamp?
Thank you very much, Madame Chair. To try and promote Dutch a little bit here.
Hang on now. Interpretation? Can you hear interpretation? Are you all plugged in?
It is a great honor to have to speak with Mr. Holland-Kay in this forum. My first question is for Mr. Holland-Kay. What do you think about the future of the European EASA? We've got a lot of rules in Europe and they are directly applicable to Heathrow. What do you want to keep of those? Would you like to sort of do some cherry-picking among those rules? What is your approach to those particular rules that are already in force? I've also got a question for Mr. Holland-Kay and for Mr. Tolland. It's very difficult for me to remember which name is which, says the speaker. On EASA, EASA has certain rules that apply to airports. How do you see this working in future? Do you think that the British airports will still meet the EASA requirements? And perhaps you could say something about applicable rules that are in force there? Now, the speeches were given at quite a speed, but I think it's important to say that in addition to the political side of Brexit, there's a practical side, where we need to try and maintain as many of the rules enforced that are currently in force as we can. Now, I think it's important to maintain a liberal aviation market and that is my request at this current moment in time.
Thank you, Mr. van der Kamp. For the socialists, who will be speaking? Mr. Liberaski.
So following him, I'll be promoting Polish English, okay?
So first of all, I'm really impressed at very positive words vis-à-vis the European Union. I haven't heard for quite a long time so many nice words about the achievements of the European Union. Second, I am equally impressed with the awareness of the negative consequences of Brexit. And I would very much like to ask the CEO of Heathrow whether he voted for or against Brexit. But I haven't heard anything about Plan B. What happens if we have a hard Brexit? What happens if it's going to be painful? How will the airports behave? Because we have an idea of the damages and consequences and an appeal to preserve the single-sky system. But we haven't heard from you what would happen if this is not going to be this way. So I would be grateful to hear from you on this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Well, I would like to thank you for all speakers. It was an excellent starting point. And I would like to apologize, I have to catch a plane just while it's flying to Latvia as well. But my question is, let's imagine Mr. Bernier will not have a mandate bigger than it is now, larger than it is now, broader than it is now, after one year, summer 2018. What will, what you can expect on your business in airports? So if it will continue like that? Because as we know, today, Mr. Bernier have only citizens' rights and financial issues. And until there's no agreement on the And until there's no agreement on those issues, there is no mandate about future relationships. So this is one question. And the second one, it's kind of things. We just are in a procedure of consent on a European common aviation area. And it will be done also from the parliament's side, this consent procedure. So I don't know why, if UK, for example, now is fulfilling all Aki, is it expecting that you will do so? Well, British side, for example, would like to avoid something of Aki? Or you are completely okay to live with it and don't pay for access to single market in aviation sector like not paying Balkan countries, from Western Balkan countries, also not being members of EU and also living in a common aviation area? So is it, what do you think? Or you would like to change something on UK side? It's mainly for Mr. Holland Kay question, so the second one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zilla, for Aldi, the Aldi group. Mrs. Bill Bow, is that right? Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, and thank you to this hearing's speakers. It's been very interesting. I'd like to ask Mr. John Holland firstly. Firstly, over the months that have elapsed since Brexit negotiations began, how have you managed to face up to this? And have you felt any immediate repercussions or consequences of the Brexit decision? I mean with actually metrics, any figures? Or is everybody in a wait-and-see mode to see how the negotiations turn out? So I'm asking what the impact on your sector of the referendum has been, if any, already. Secondly, I'd like to ask if you're taking any steps in preparation for possible exit by the UK. We don't know how that's going to work. And I'd like to say quite frankly, in this parliament, we voted and adopted general negotiating mandate. And in the first version, the status of European residents in the UK was deemed to be crucial. And secondly, what the bill that the UK was going to have to pay before leaving was. Those are issues, therefore, that have been taken on board by all institutions in Europe and by all M E Ps as priorities. Lastly, regarding Ireland, certain voices and certain sources in the institutions have been saying that if Northern Ireland were to decide to merge with the Republic, then that would have an immediate impact and an immediate effect. Do you think that that would have effects on airports? Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Thank you very much. Well, I'm going to be promoting with Swedish now. It's my mother tongue. Thank you for coming to put forward the idea and defend ideas for mitigating the damage caused by Brexit insofar as possible. We are neighbours. My home country is a neighbour of the United Kingdom, and we're going to be suffering consequences too. So we have to see what the negative impacts of Brexit will be on mobility in Europe in general. And we're going to have to try to coordinate to try to mitigate those negative impacts as well as stressing that the aviation sector needs to set about diminishing climate change effects as well. But that's my two penneth. The situation is extremely concerning right now, worrying. Thank you, Mrs. Ayut.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Well, I just wanted to ask if by chance, when it comes to the assessments, the analyses in respect of these major hubs in Europe, you are going to be taking account of the repercussions Brexit might have on smaller regional airports? Because most air traffic is via low-cost airlines. It's thanks to the open skies we have that now these low-cost airlines can operate here and there throughout Europe. So they are very significant for a number of regional airports that are going, maybe hit quite hard by Brexit. So have you looked into that? Have you carried out any simulations, as it were, with regard to the future of regional airports? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give the floor now for one minute each to the political groups. Yours is first. Who's going to be speaking? Mr. Moncass, you have one minute.
What's that? Yes, there's a number of studies that have been carried out by EASA and a number of analysis. And there have been suggestions that Brexit could be problem-free. But there will be changes. And my question to the airports is, where will there be changes? Is there anything that, when it comes to other agreements, other countries that we have agreements with, Switzerland, Canada? I don't know where we could find some basis for how to operate future. Thank you.
Thank you. Socialist group, who will be speaking? Mrs. Lucy Anderson.
Actually, going to make points later on about the aerospace industry and impact on manufacturing. But I'll just say a few things now. In terms of the overall impact on Brexit, I think it's very clear that no deal is absolutely not better than a deal. And it's in the interests of all, everyone in Europe, all of us proud Europeans, that whatever happens, we don't get into a massive situation of uncertainty. And I'm glad that you've made those points. But I specifically wanted to ask what your view is about the issues about workers and deregulation. And actually, this will come up, and I hope the next speakers will also ask this point. Because we do not want a situation where the workforce across Europe is driven to the lowest common denominator and where European rights and protections for workers are not respected. So I did want to ask about that. And also, in terms of the supply chain, it's in the interest of all, okay, very, very quickly, one more point. All of the EU countries, that the supply chain around the goods and parts and services is maintained. And how can we possibly do that in the context of the lack of certainty in the overall discussions?
Thank you, Mrs. Foster.
Thank you for the presentation. I've just got a couple of observations. One by John on Heathrow and when he mentioned, obviously, going back to 1973. As the greatest advocate, I think, the UK on the liberalisation of the industry back in the 80s, which gave rise to the very successful companies like Ryanair and EasyJet. I'm just curious who suggested that that would be necessary to go that far back, because I don't believe it needs to be the case. And my second point for Dublin Airport, you were talking about security standards. And as it happens, I mean, we comply to ECAC Doc 30. So I'm not sure where Dublin comes in there, as though we're not going to be compliant when we're looking at security, because that obviously covers the whole of the 44 ECAP members. So I just wanted to just raise that and get your view on that. My final point is that clearly there'll be this great repeal bill when all of the legislation will remain in statute in the United Kingdom. And I would expect that there would be a sufficient transition period for anything that needs to change. And finally, in terms of compliance, I would not see certainly the UK being non-compliant certainly to any Aki or regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wiltenbroek.
Chair, a few questions for Mr. Holland Kay in line with the question of Mr. Van der Kamp on EASA. If it will turn out that the UK will not be longer a member of EASA, what are the consequences, knowing that we are negotiating right now? Also, on the competences of EASA with regard to ground handling, but also with regard to airport safety-related equipments? What is your position? Second question related, are you advocating within the UK to stay a member of EASA? And what's the process? How do you try to influence your own UK negotiation position? And then a second question is also more or less related. Now you're part of an un-uncomplished single European sky. You are working also within CESA. You're part of the 10 T networks. Are you also advocating to remain in these 10 T networks and in the initiatives like CESA? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wiltenbroek. Mr. Kramer, you have the floor.
I think that there's not going to be any cherry picking because, of course, we've got conventions and agreements with other countries. They're not in the EU, Switzerland, Norway. Only they have to pay for that, and certain rules have to be followed. So this is my question about regional airports. In 10 years at least, they need to become profitable. So 50% nearly of all regional airports are running at a loss. So what are we going to do about that? Who pays for that? Taxpayers. And then you're going to have to accept that the E C J is the decision-making body when it comes to infringements. Do you accept that? Or do you think that, no, everything should be done on British territory? And the final point, why are we having the discussion now after the referendum? The disadvantages of Brexit should have been discussed in advance. Perhaps the referendum would have been different otherwise. But if you complain about the EU for 30 years, then you shouldn't be surprised when people vote against it.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. E F D D, is there somebody who wishes to speak? No? Then we'll turn to our guests. You've received them. There've been a lot of questions raised of you, such as what kind of parts of the Aki should be kept? Questions such as how about the role of EASA in all of this? And then regional airports, what the impact on them will be? And some colleagues have said, what if there's hard Brexit? Is there a Plan B? Some kind of alternative that you've got ready in the event of there being hard Brexit? And then the consequences regarding mobility? Shouldn't we have European coordination for the future? Should there not be regulation? These are many questions, very interesting. And I'll give the floor to each of you for three minutes. Because they're very valid questions, and we wonder whether you, as protagonists, have thought about all of this. Thank you. Mr. Holland Kay, please.
So just for the record, I did actually campaign for the remain vote, in case you were wondering. And the argument I made then was that the single European aviation market has been the biggest success for normal people, hard-working people from the European Union. As is usually the case, particularly in my household, nobody listened to me. So we now have to be pragmatic and make the best of where we are. And I think pulling together a couple of the themes, the aviation market by nature is integrated. And we need to have common standards and common ways of working. And that reduces costs, it reduces complexity, it is much safer. So when it comes to areas such as EASA, yes, we would expect to continue to be part of EASA. That is what we are arguing for within the UK. And I think that is something where there is widespread support. Similarly, the single European skies. And I think with both EASA and the single European sky CESA, the UK has been one of the leading advocates for that and also has been doing a lot of the work on it. So I think at Heathrow, we are one of the earliest adopters of A C D M, which is one of the enablers for CESA, and have pioneered a lot of the techniques that will be used. And we would want to continue to do that. And it's in all our interests that we do so. What has the impact been so far? Well, I have to say, we've seen the highest level of passenger growth and the highest level of cargo growth we've seen for over a decade over the last six to nine months. A lot of that is related to exchange rates. But also, I think, a sense within the UK that people are just getting on with things and getting back to business. And they leave it to us to make sure that we sort out the best long-term arrangements. And I have heard it said that Brexit is a political issue, not a business issue. I think that if we ignore the needs of business and normal working people, then business issues will become political issues. We have to make sure we are creating growth and jobs. That is all of our responsibilities. And business needs to have a voice in that. And maintaining as close as we can to the status quo, I think, is in the interests of people right across Europe, including in the UK, when it comes to the single European aviation market. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holland Kay. Mr. Toland now has the floor.
Thank you. Maybe if I address the first point about EASA and ECAC. Sorry, if I address the first point about EASA and ECAC, we simply don't know. We think there should be absolute commonality, reciprocacy maintained. But we don't know how the UK is actually going to approach these things through the end of the negotiations or not. In terms of Plan B, there is none. We're obviously developing our own scenarios. We're very, very concerned. It's a key priority, given the dependency in Ireland on the UK connectivity. But we simply have no idea of a coherent plan from the UK and what they're going to do and how the negotiations are going to work. We're going to be probably hearing later on from some of the airline customers. But there is a cliff coming. It's coming not in two years, but next March. And there's going to be prolonged uncertainty, which I'm sure some of those customers will have to deal with nearer the time. On a regional basis, as the gentleman pointed out, half of the regional airports lose money. They're the most important airports locally to their local economy. And this is just going to be a body blow to them. You saw the chart I showed earlier of the exposure of regional airports to connectivity to the UK. I don't think the taxpayer can, should, or should be allowed to pay. I think it has to be the market, and it has to be by fostering competition, by enabling airlines to fly and enabling the continuation of the single skies. And frankly, that leads us back to a problem. I think somebody asked a question about Northern Ireland, and I wouldn't want to stray into that sort of complicated territory. But I suppose suffice to say that Dublin is Northern Ireland and the Islands Airport. We do two out of three people coming on to the entire island of Ireland come in through Dublin Airport. Unfortunately, Northern Ireland is a place in the EU that's most exposed actually to Brexit because you're going to have the complexity of the border, you're going to have the complexity of the common travel area. And also, their economy and their tourist industry is totally tied up. So whilst it's going to be a mess for the Republic, it's going to be an even bigger mess for Northern Ireland. I suppose just to sum up in terms of impact, we're getting very, very good growth. But as you saw on the iceberg earlier, we see UK inbound falling like a stone, and that needs to be arrested. And that is the start of the reality of Brexit. The UK economy, I think, is going to struggle. I think there is cliff-edge uncertainty. And we provide a lot of connectivity to the UK at this stage, where you have 23 flights, I think, to UK airports from Dublin. I think the London airports go to eight or nine other UK airports. So we're extremely concerned and would like to see a coherent plan and would be concerned that there's an imbalance in the negotiating position and leverage.
Thank you, Mr. Toland. Mr. Gordon then has the floor now. Thank you, Madam Chair. The airports that will remain in the single sky and the single European area will feel the consequences. The operators running those airports are going to be subject to new rules. And the airlines that come under UK transport certificates, they're now part of the single market. They don't have traffic rights right now. They're going to be suffering from the effects of Brexit. That's going to be the kind of impact on the airports remaining in the European space. And that's why we're keen to see what the outcome of the negotiations is. And of course, I would agree with some of the queries raised by previous speakers. The so-called regional airports. The so-called regional airports that depend a lot on such airlines, low cost ones, often flying the UK flag, are going to suffer from the consequences, because those airlines will. And the question arising tomorrow, the next day, will be, we've got this economic model for airports and for airlines and for carriers, and that model is going to subsist. And the Europeans like travelling using that kind of model. So clearly, our citizens are going to go on wanting to travel in this way. And since nature abhors a vacuum, we shall see how that space is filled in the future in framework of the single European market by the countries that are in it. Thanks to the speakers from the various airports. Now, panel number two. You here represent a number of airlines. You're going to have between five and seven minutes each to give us the true version of the upcoming effects of Brexit, what the impact of Brexit will be on the sector. Mr. Willie Walsh from IAG, you have the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen, pleasure to be here. IAG, International Airlines Group, is a product of the EU. We are a multinational, multi-brand airline group, registered in Spain, listed on the London and Spanish Stock Exchange. We are running the business from London. We have six principal airline brands operated by eight airlines, who are registered in the UK, Ireland, Spain, and France. And we run our global business services from Krakow in Poland. We employ 60,000 people. Last year, we flew over 100 million passengers. And I am Irish and I voted to remain. It's a privilege of Irish residents in the UK that they get to vote, and I was pleased to do so. The EU should be proud, and I'm sure it is proud, of its achievements in relation to aviation. This parliament has argued long and hard to uphold the right of free movement, a core principle of the EU. And although we as an industry have not yet provided you with free travel, although I'm sure Michael is working hard to achieve that, we have provided you with affordable, cheap, and extensive air links that has facilitated the free movement of people, goods, and services across Europe. And it's not just the few who have benefited. Last year, over 900 million people flew into and out of the EU. It's estimated that that figure will probably hit 1 billion people this year. Since the liberalisation and deregulation of the airline industry in 1993, we've seen greater competition, more choice, lower fares. The number of city pairs served in the EU has risen from... You can ignore the slides. I didn't even know they were there. The number of city pairs served in the EU has risen from 692 to over 3,200 today. The number of intra-EU services, which have more than two airlines competing, has risen from 61 in 1993 to almost 650 today. The air transport industry supports economic activity in tourism and trade that's estimated to be valued at about 210 billion euros and supports 3.1 million jobs. 123 billion euros and 1.8 million jobs in the EU27, representing about 1% of GDP, and a disproportionate benefit in the UK of about 87 billion and 1.3 million jobs. And since 2011, IAG has invested over 12 billion US dollars in Airbus aircraft. And as of today, we have outstanding orders valued in the order of 16 billion US dollars. And we expect those Airbus aircraft to be delivered to us with the wings attached. And the wings, as you know, are made in the UK. Now, aviation differs from most businesses in three prime areas. You've heard one of them. There is no WTO coverage of aviation. We are excluded from WTO rules. So there is no fallback to WTO. The airline industry still operates under an arcane system regulating the ownership and control, the effective control of airlines. And though there has been some movements to liberalise that, these rules still exist today. And importantly, from a third point of view, and particularly important for consumers, the airline industry typically sells our product one year in advance. And for these three reasons, we believe it is imperative that negotiators focus on our industry, so that the 1 billion people who are expected to travel this year and next can continue to book with airlines confident that the services they are booking will be provided by the airlines involved. We would argue that the system of international air service agreements provides a familiar, tried and tested framework, and this has predated the EU. We believe that the EU and the UK should sign a comprehensive air transport agreement, similar to, but more open than those that are already in place between the EU, the US, Canada, and others, recognising that there is a deeper relationship existing between the UK and the EU27. And to maintain the consumer benefits, we believe that this agreement should go further and allow all airlines from the EU27 and the UK all the freedoms of the air, so that they can continue to operate freely between and within each other's territories. It should also clarify that airlines in the UK and the EU27 can continue to be owned by nationals of either party without the need for complex ownership and control structures being put in place. With policy support, it ought to be relatively straightforward to agree a deal on aviation that will be ready when the UK leaves the EU. We also believe that negotiators need to find a way to enable the UK to remain part of IASA. The UK contributes significantly to IASA, and I believe it is recognised within the industry that that contribution has significant benefits. We believe that 40% of non-IASA employees contributing to the work of the organisation are British and that their contribution should continue. And we anticipate that a governance structure could be put in place that allows the UK to take full part, whether through a joint committee or some other form. Aviation is an industry that focuses on safety and security. And I don't believe it's in anybody's interests in the UK or in the EU27 that we should weaken that or in any way seek to diminish the contribution that is being made by experts in this area. So while we recognise that there are significant challenges for all sectors, we believe that the challenges to aviation should be prioritised so that the benefits that have been so well recognised across Europe for consumers can be maintained. Thank you very much.
Merci.
Thank you very much. I would now like to give the floor to Mr. O'Leary.
Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. It's a great pleasure to be here. Always great fun to be back in Brussels, where I spend so much time usefully deploying, doing what I'm not sure. For those of you who don't know, Ryanair is, next slide, is Europe's favourite airline. We've grown to become the largest airline in Europe by offering the lowest fare in every market in which we operate. This year, we expect to grow from 120 million passengers to 130 million passengers. And those passengers are enjoying 13% lower airfares as we continue to use the benefits of our greater buying power, particularly with aircraft and non-ACI airports, to lower the cost of flying for consumers. Next slide. Our average fares this year were 41 euros, and we do have a plan, unlike Willy's Six Airlines, to keep driving down the cost of air travel all the way across Europe, so that we can keep Willy and all the other high fare highwaymen honest over the next number of years. It is a cause much to be admired. There are, however, a number of very important issues that we need to deal with today. And this is next slide. It is not the, that's just where we fly everywhere in Europe, next slide. That's where we're going to grow in the next eight years from 130 million to 200 million passengers a year. And the great joy we have in Ryanair is we're an Irish airline, so even if Brexit happens, we're still free to fly happily around Europe. We may not be flying in the UK, but, and I wouldn't worry about the regional airports, because we'll be taking a lot of aircraft out of the UK in the April of 2019 and reallocating them to European regional airports, who will see more growth and they'll know what to handle, although Heathrow thankfully will be empty, probably for a period of months. There is a real prospect, next slide. There is a real prospect, and we need to deal with this, that there is going to be no flights between the UK and Europe for a period of weeks, months beyond March 2019. There's a real prospect, because if the UK government sticks to its present position, and that is a setting a pretty low bar, but if the UK government sticks to its present position, which is ECJ jurisdiction is a red line issue, free movement of people, et cetera, they are going to leave the European Union and they're going to leave Open Skies. And as Willy rightly says, there is no replacement agreement. So the UK is going to have to find a way, within the next 12 months, to get back into Open Skies or to have a bilateral with the EU27. I think that's an impossibility. It's an impossibility because there's no goodwill in Europe towards Britain and allowing them back in on preferential terms to Open Skies or its equivalent. I don't in any way underestimate the extent to which Lufthansa and Air France see a competitive opportunity here to play ducks and drakes and screw over Ryanair or IAG or EasyJet. And as we know, the French and the Germans, whenever they can get an opportunity, stick one into the British like nothing better. So we need to start dealing with the reality that there is going to be no flights between the UK and Europe. I've been to a number of meetings with the British government at which we put this proposition to them and, God help us, when we asked them what Plan B is, there is no Plan B. When you really push them on, what happens if there's no Plan B? Is there a Plan C? One of the senior Brexit ministers suggested that there would be a bilateral between the UK and Pakistan, and that that may well bring forward, replace the traffic that would be lost between the UK and Europe. And I think one of the issues, I should be arguing on behalf of the industry, please let's not have this outcome, because we must have a deal and so the rich airports can continue to overcharge us, or in the case of Mr. Holland Kay, blow 18 billion building a runway that would only cost 200 million at any other sensible airport. It may not be the worst outcome in the world, because by September of 2018, when your average British voter is sitting down to work out where he's going on holidays in the summer of 2019, the two options he will have will be drive to Scotland or get a ferry to Ireland. And I love Ireland dearly. I just don't want to spend all my holidays there. And nor does much of the UK population either. So in reality, when, and you take it on a sectoral basis, when the reality of hard Brexit begins to dawn on some of these people, and I do need to counsel here in this chamber, it's going to dawn around September of 2018. Aviation will not wait until March 19. If we don't have a clear legal framework for continuing to operate flights to and from between the UK and Europe from about September 18 onwards, and in the absence of Britain blinking and deciding to stay in the European Union, there is not going to be an interim agreement, there is not going to be a legal basis. We will be cancelling flights. We will be cancelling people's holidays for the summer of 2019. The Germans and the French will love it, because it's going to cause all sorts of disruption to airlines. IAG's structure is going to get broken up, because it can't be a Spanish airline operated from Britain or a British airline operated from Madrid or whatever else it is that cross borders, even though it should be. There is going to be a real mess. You are going to be dealing with the outcome of that mess. Britain is going to suffer much more, but I wouldn't underestimate the extent to which the European, there will be jobs lost at European airports, there will be jobs lost in the tourism sector, in Spain, in Portugal, in Italy. Because yes, we'll replace a lot of the flights that we would normally operate to the UK, but the Germans and the Scandinavians and the Poles are not going to make up those numbers that Britain provides at the moment. There are some upsides. There may be some duty free sales at UK airports. Sadly, there won't be any passengers travelling through those airports to get to Europe. And the French and the Germans would benefit hugely by all the transatlantic traffic that wants to connect across Europe will now have to fly to Paris, God help them, or to Frankfurt, God help them even more, or maybe a few of them will get into Schiphol. There will also be ownership restrictions that will have to be sorted out. IAG's structure will not survive a hard Brexit. But maybe that may be one of the ways we persuade the UK government that the sensible outcome here is to ignore the plebiscite of 12 months ago, stay in Europe, and continue to benefit from Open Skies. Should they do so, by the way, Europe does need to get up off its backside. We do need some reform, but this august institution has failed to deliver for about 10 or 15 years. You can start by reforming a lot of the rich airports down there, who have done nothing in the 30 years to lower the cost of travel. In fact, they put it up wherever they've had an opportunity. And you can continue to support the free movement of people across Europe, preferably on Ryanair, so that you're all saving a fortune of money while visiting your friends and relatives all over Europe. Thank you.
Merci Monsieur O'Leary.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Leary. Let's start, we're already seeing the sort of competition here with the airports. We've certainly started that battle. But now let's move on to Mr. Kennedy. You are here representing Airlines for America. The floor is yours, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, thank you for having me here today. My name is Sean Kennedy. I'm the Senior Vice President of Global Government Affairs for Airlines for America. A4A is the leading trade association representing US-based passenger and cargo airlines. Our members carry about 90% of passenger and cargo volume, and our members include carriers such as United Airlines, American, UPS, FedEx, and Atlas Air. Let me start off by expressing my appreciation for the opportunity to address this committee. I've worked in both Houses of Congress, as well as the White House under President Obama. I thought the reform of the healthcare system was a complicated task, but Brexit is on an entirely different level. You are taking on an incredibly complicated and comprehensive issue that's going to affect the United States, the EU, and the UK, which is the provision of transatlantic air service. It's interesting for me as an airline advocate, because air service is something that's fairly easy to talk about. That's largely because everyone has used the product, everyone knows how it touches them. My father was 27 when he took his first flight in the 1960s. I was five when I took my first flight in the 1970s. And my children were born in the 2000s and each took travel within months of their birth. We've reached the point where it's sort of akin to mobile telephone service, initially something that was a luxury, but now something that's taken for granted and woven into our culture. Every day, there are 377 flights from the United States destined for the EU27. They're carrying 76,000 passengers every single day. About 20% of those reach the EU with a stopover in Heathrow. In fact, nearly 53% of all transiting, of all traffic in Heathrow transits onto the EU27. So we really cannot underscore enough the importance of Heathrow to global and European connectivity. Air services are exchanged globally through a system of bilateral and multilateral international aviation agreements, without which airlines would not have the legal authority to operate. The system for aviation rights has for decades now been the status quo. In light of the system, as has been stated, governments have historically carved out air travel from trade agreements. Air services between the US and the EU are based on the 2007 US-EU Open Skies Agreement, celebrates its 10-year anniversary this week, which liberalised the transatlantic aviation market, meaning no restrictions on the flights, capacity, pricing, or market entrance between the US and Europe. This agreement provides the legal foundation for airline alliances, such as Star, SkyTeam, One World, which include major European airlines such as BA, Lufthansa, Air France, and KLM. The vast majority of flyers are on one of these alliances, either directly from the US to continental Europe or directly to the countries themselves. Airlines within an alliance coordinate with government approval on routes, schedules, and capacity. This yields more frequent flights with better connections and better timed and spread throughout the day. Competition between alliances keeps fares low for travellers. As has been said before, when the UK leaves the EU in March of 2019, they'll no longer be part of the Open Skies Agreement or the single aviation market. So on the first day of Brexit, they will no longer have, we will, US passengers will no longer have the ability to fly to the UK or fly to the UK to the EU27. And the same will hold true for European airlines. It's been said by others here that other industries, automotive, telecom, have fallback positions with the WTO. They can continue to operate even in the absence of a trade agreement. We cannot implore you enough to bear in mind that aviation simply does not. Air services are specifically carved out of the WTO. There are bilaterals that go back to the 40s and 50s and 60s. Air travel was very different in that era, as some of you may recall. That is an era where telephones were tethered onto walls, there were no CD players, and it was a business model that simply did not have the kind of robust maturity that we have right now. It's not what people have come to expect. You also have the US-EU Open Skies Agreement facilitated transatlantic airline alliances, which offer greater connectivity at lower cost. But government approval of these alliances hinges on a fully open transatlantic market, one that ends on day one of Brexit. Another complication that's been noted is that airlines generally sell tickets one year in advance. So airlines and passengers need assurances that they can book with confidence starting in March of 2018. Some suggested that US airlines simply relocate their hubs to other points outside of Heathrow, onto the continent. It's a, makes sense, but it's impossible to implement. Airlines have spent, US airlines have invested billions of dollars into the... Airlines have spent, US airlines have invested billions of dollars into the facilities at Heathrow. Of the 10, top 10 transatlantic markets between the US and Europe, Heathrow represents eight of them. It is simply not a tenable option for us right now. So where does that leave us? Earlier I noted that travel has become as ubiquitous as mobile phone service. I suspect that most of your constituents assume that on day one of Brexit, they'll still be able to make a telephone call from their home country to the UK. They're going to expect the same thing when it comes to air travel, they're going to expect that on day one of Brexit, there won't be this kind of disruption. This begs for both the EU and the UK to take action now to provide legal certainty for your constituents. There's two steps needed to maintain international connectivity between the US, the UK and the EU. One is an Open Skies Agreement between the US and the United Kingdom. A4A is advocating actively with both sides and we believe there's a path forward on that. And the second, which obviously is more relevant to you, is some kind of agreement between the EU and the UK. This would lead to the continuation of an aviation market that allows for open competition and avoids unnecessary regulation of commercial decisions. We recognize you have a lot to do in a very short period of time in reaching agreement between governments and across industry sectors regarding Brexit, but a major disruption in airline service between the US, the UK and the EU would simply wreak havoc for all sides. As you know, there's been increased discussion of a transitional arrangement to limit the immediate impact on member states on the exit of the UK from the European Union, while future arrangements being defined. These arrangements would be targeted at the industries most immediately disrupted by the process. Aviation falls squarely within those confines. We ask that you voice your support for aviation to be dealt with as a priority issue and has not become hostage to negotiating positions. The US airline industry appreciates your leadership in tackling the challenges posed by Brexit and I appreciate you having me here today. Welcome your questions.
Merci beaucoup, Monsieur. Thank you very much, Mr Kennedy. I'd now like to give the floor to Mr Thomas Kopf. You are the Senior Vice President at Lufthansa Group. You have the floor.
Ja, sehr geehrte Frau Vorsitzende.
Yes, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, MEPs. This is a very dramatic event for the whole of Europe and Michael O'Leary said, I mean, if this, Brexit happened in France or Germany, this would have happened quite differently. And I think that for the Lufthansa Group, there could be thorough and quite terrible consequences. Now, of course, we'd be delighted if everything were to go back to stage one and this weren't to happen at all, but of course, we've got the European market, we've got open skies, we'd like to keep that. For 25 years, the single aviation market has been in action in Europe. A few weeks ago, the European Airline and Airport Association advocated on the anniversary, 50th anniversary of the Treaties of Rome, that this cannot be the future of Europe. There was an enormous campaign, this was before the elections in the Netherlands and in France, things have got better since then. But now, I am here in the Transport and Tourism Committee in the European Parliament, I have to think about the G20 in Germany, there they talked about free trade, but also about fair trade. And what we've seen from this body on, in terms of legislation on passenger rights, et cetera, if we were to look to the east and not to the west, people who fly to China, to Japan, they should have their rights guaranteed when they fly with European carriers, but they are no longer protected if they fly back with a non-European carrier, for example, Japanese airlines, and the same with emissions trading in Europe. If we as Lufthansa fly Berlin, Frankfurt, Beijing, we have to pay for emissions trading, but if it's Qatar from Berlin via Doha to China, we don't. And what we don't want to see is legislation where we have all had this open skies market, but it's all about, of course, passenger rights, emissions trading, freedom of movement. We don't want this to apply to the European airlines in the EU, but not others. Open skies, yes, an open area for all, but there should be a level playing field. The legislation that you make in this house must apply throughout the, anyone who runs aircraft services in the EU. Now, we had strikes in Germany and the cost basis of a European airline in Europe must be focused on our hundreds of thousands of employees that are employed by Lufthansa here in Europe, there should be no disadvantages to our way of operating airlines. We have been able to use the single market to be able to invest with Austrian Airlines, Brussels Airlines, Adolomiti in Italy, even in Switzerland, but there's similar legislation everywhere. And we all want to stay together. This is what has really been advocated by Lufthansa and British Airlines, but what we don't want is for different legislation to apply within the single market. So it's very important that, well, we very much regret Brexit. I mean, we would quite like to have been able to invest further in the UK, but this is, these are all things we have to consider. Open skies and new legislation, yes, but a clear, a community, a key legislation from Brussels, Strasbourg, we don't want a sort of second class, if you will, we don't want to be disadvantaged as EU carriers, we want to use the advantages of the single market, but others using that single market should also be subject to those rules. That's the clear view of the Lufthansa Group. Now, in for a penny, in for a pound, everything could stay as it is, but the same rules should always apply. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr Kopf. I will be briefly representing our chair to ensure European continuity here. Now, it's going to be over to Mr Ralph Pastleitner, Director of International Public Policy of the TUI Group.
Thank you, Chairman. So a lot has been said already, so I'll try to focus a little bit on the tourism angle. Next slide, please. That's just the agenda, next slide, thank you. So a brief look on what TUI is about, we're the world's number one tourism company, 67,000 employees worldwide, we own 16 cruise ships and we have our own 153 airlines in six different European countries, so we also consider ourselves to be a truly European company. We have 1,600 travel shops all over Europe, we own our own hotels and more than 20 million customers from 31 source markets travel to 180 different countries with us. Next slide, please. To give you a few figures on the contribution of tourism to the EU GDP, overall, it amounts to 1,500 trillion euros. And if you look at these, if you look at this graph, you can see that the top five destinations for UK residents are France, Italy, Spain, Greece and Portugal. And in four of these five destinations, the tourism contribution to GDP is over 10%. In the case of Greece, it's 18.6%. So I think this is, these are figures that need to, need to sink in if you look at the, at the overall picture here. Next slide, please. So what could be the potential, we have to talk potential here because we obviously don't know, we don't have all the facts, so we, to a certain extent, we have to speculate, but we have commissioned a study and it has shown us some potential effects of Brexit on tourism in the EU27. So they've calculated 21 billion euros potential loss just in tourism spending if the Brexit would materialize. And if you break that down on some of the most popular tourist destinations, you would see that Malta, by, for example, would face a loss of 2.4% of their GDP just by the loss of tourism spending that would be happening through a Brexit. Spain, still 0.5% of the GDP, so I think these are quite considerable numbers. On the left side of the slide, you can see again some of the benefits that tourism has brought to the EU. We see that 10% of GDP are contributed through tourism in the EU, which is 11.6% of employment, that's 26.5 million jobs in the European Union, and roughly 500 million international tourists per year come into the EU, so that's 40% of all international arrivals worldwide. Next slide, please. So to, to give you a further idea on how that relates to Brexit and to the UK passenger flows, the top five touristic destinations from the UK are, as we see here in this slide, France, Spain, Portugal, Italy and Greece. And the amount of tourists that are going from the UK to those countries per year are quite remarkable, so 13.5 million passengers every year, or that's from 2016, so in 2016, 13.5 million passengers from the UK to Spain. And one remark on the Greek number here, so 2.5 million, that's 10% of all international arrivals in Greece, so I think that's also quite remarkable, that 10% of all international arrivals in Greece in 2016 came from the UK. Some of these figures on the, on the right-hand side of the slide have been mentioned before, so I'm not going to dwell too long on them, just so that you see that this is really a European issue, not just a UK issue. And for us, it's important to look at both sides, we have a carrier, Thomson Airways in the, in the UK and we have five airlines in the European Union, 27, so we have to look at both sides. So 27 UK carriers currently transport one, or operate 1 million flights into the EU and 142 EU carriers operate almost the same amount of flights into the UK. So I think one can, one can see that there is a mutual interest here. Brexit could result in reduced air service agreements, we've heard that before, air service agreements predating the current European Common Aviation Area, they might be insufficient. We will see a reduction of round trips for sure, less choice, less competition could be a potential effect. And obviously, what I've, what I've showed you before, a fall in tourism spending could or will most certainly happen under the scenario of a hard Brexit. So the overall impact on GDP for the European Union, including the UK, would then be minus 210 billion euros according to that study. It's a rather extreme scenario where you look at the air traffic coming to a stop and only certain portions of traffic would be substituted by other means of transport like ferries, trains or buses, but nonetheless, it's an extreme scenario, but it gives you an idea, a flavor of the figures and of what's at stake when we talk about the Brexit and then tourism. Next slide. So just some final key messages from our side, we believe that the European Common Aviation Area should be preserved because of the fact that the pre-1992, so before the aviation liberalization, the air service agreements before 1992 provide an insufficient basis for the future. EASA, we've heard about that, we agree that it's a mutual interest to keep the UK in there. Safety first, we believe is essential. And last but not least, something we've heard as well, legal and planning security for the holiday season, we need to have that as early as possible. We sell our holidays 12 to 18 months in advance, so the sooner we have clarity on these issues, the better. Thank you.
Merci Monsieur Pastleitner. Thank you, Mr Pastleitner. So that's it as regards the input from the airlines. So apparently there's more turbulence up in the air than on the ground, but anyway. Now, we're going to hear from the coordinators.
Chairman, thank you very much. On several occasions, I have tweeted that Brexit is impossible. I know that that might damage my political career, such a comment, but I think it's important to talk about reality. I've got two questions for the airlines. Firstly, to Mr Kennedy, you touched on this already, but what do these old bilateral agreements involve? Mr O'Leary said after March 2018, no planes are going to fly into and out of the UK, but we've got these old bilateral agreements. Is that a fallback option? Because we're going to have to do something to keep these aircraft in the air. My second question is to Lufthansa and IBG, there's, Lufthansa's in a different position to IBG because Lufthansa is on the continent and in the UK. So Lufthansa's legal basis is in Europe. Do you expect this to result in price differences? I mean, would the market become less liberal, do you think, as a result of this? That's a question for Lufthansa. Thank you.
Merci Monsieur.
Thank you, Mr Van der Kamp. First, S&amp;D, Mrs Hilary Sanders.
Herr Präsident, ich habe alle Informationen, die ich bekomme.
Thank you, Chair. I'm grateful for all the information we've been given. I don't know that we should be calmer after that or more nervous. I think that we need as soon as possible to find out what's really going on. We've said this before, but it's difficult and as has been said, there's a need for a global organization such as the International Air Traffic Organization, but it's difficult with the UK going their own way. We're following on what the Americans did in an earlier mandate with regard to crews from third countries. Crews from third countries are beginning to be a matter of some concern, but we're also aware that jobs and careers in the air traffic sector are becoming less and less attractive for young, to young people, studies really pointed to that. And in the context of Brexit providing even more confusion, there's a need to try to encourage people to go into careers in the air sector. There's another matter, which is visas for tourism. We've got a major problem right now regarding tourists who don't have visas, such as Russians. But now looking at the scenario that you've all described, we look at Brexit, the way it's going to be, I mean, I'd like to believe like Mr Van der Kamp that it's impossible, but once Brexit takes place and the UK disappears from Europe, it's not going to be like Norway, for example, and UK citizens are going to have to get a visa. That may be a sort of charming, quaint, old-style practice, but it's not so much fun once you're in the, in the queue for visas. So I'd like to hear what you think about visas. And then there's safety issues, we've recently had a dispute regarding whether computers should be allowed in hand baggage or not. Are you saying I shouldn't ask that? The interpreter feels she's being asked to wind up. Yes, please wind up. Mr Walters wanted to ask what's going to happen about Iberia and British Air since you chair IAG. I think that the hub at Terminal 4 in Madrid is quite attractive to other airlines. And lastly, ECJ, when it comes to international agreements and other disputes that will arise with the UK, will the jurisdiction be that of the ECJ?
Thank you, Ms Foster, you have the floor.
Well, suppose in politics, you know, you're either one of those people where the glad is either.
is either half-full or half-empty. And I think our job is to facilitate, make sure we have a glass that's half-full, and look for answers when we have challenges. I am confident with those guests who are on the platform today, we have probably some of the best brains in the aviation industry. And I find it quite depressing, in a way, that while there are huge challenges that will lie ahead, that there is actually as much negativity, should I say, when we know that there are answers. And I'd just like to touch on a couple. Thanks for the presentations, because they're all very different and very interesting. But I fully agree with Willie Walsh when he said, we'll have to find a way on our service agreements. Clearly, we need good comprehensive agreements with our colleagues across Europe and the EU, because we need to make sure that we have a smooth transition once Brexit has taken place, because this is about all our colleagues as well from airlines in other member states. Notwithstanding that, from a personal point of view, as a rapporteur, or having dealt with every piece of legislation for the last seventeen years, from the creation of EASA, single European sky, occurrence reporting, airport security, there are some of us here, and we do understand how all of this has evolved. And so I'm curious to really wonder why there would be then people on the platform thinking that we in the UK would not wish to comply when we've been behind a lot of these changes and great improvements, I may say, when we're looking at security. So I think that's a question, if anybody wants to answer it. I think you raised a very good point on ownership and control, and for Sean, our very nice colleague from the States. Of course, one of the biggest problems we've had on EU-US open skies, and I was here for that too, is we still never resolved ownership and control. And I agree fully with what Willie said, with regards, we should be moving forward on ownership and control, because there's still reticence, actually, across Europe as well, that's just as a general point. But we'd miss you, Ryanair. We don't want you to not come into the UK, and you shouldn't keep saying that, because somebody might want to pick up your business. And I've fought hard for the low cost and for people to get really good choice. We fought for consumer choice, to make sure, as a former legacy carrier employee, I always believed that there should be much more of an open approach and people being able to fly at a reasonable price. So you know, it is a great market, and we've got great successes there. So don't go, Michael, because I'm sure we'll all miss you hugely. I think my final couple of points is on, it's very good to have airlines for America. And again, I think we can all remember the days when I worked for a company, it was the first privatized legacy carrier, when the American carriers were all in Chapter Eleven, and the rest of Europe was all state subsidized. So we've moved a long way from there as well. I think we need to remember that. And you quite rightly say, North Atlantic traffic, this is key, and we need to make sure there is no blockage anywhere, as these negotiations continue, and then obviously, that's a transition from when the UK leave. My final point really is for Thomas with Lufthansa. We will be looking at eight six eight, which is about competition. Clearly, that's another debate on another day, but I get a little bit concerned about some of the protectionism I seem to hear while I'm sitting in this parliament, sometimes from European carriers, who don't seem to appear to want some competition from third countries. And I always say, be careful what you wish for, because we need the traffic rights into these other countries across the world as well, and we must be seen to be open for business. And okay, and we'll work as best we can on making sure that there is good competition there. But as I said, I'm very confident that we will succeed, that the consumer will succeed, and people like me are working behind the, I suppose, quietly, with other politicians and governments and others, to make sure that we make this as best a success as possible. And just one final point, the Prime Minister's never said there's a hard Brexit or a soft Brexit. There'll be a Brexit, and we need to make sure, we need to make sure, Vim, I'm not answerable to you, I'm not answerable to you, Vim, and we'll need to make sure that we get the best Brexit, so from both sides of the channel, that we all have a fair, that we all have a fair agreement, a fair negotiation, and we can make sure consumers in Europe have the choice that they've had for such a long time. Thank you very much.
Ms. Foster, thank you. I think a question shouldn't be longer than the short talks we've been given, so please, let's try to stick to the three minutes, because we've already lost six or seven minutes. I mean, Ms. Foster, that's the second time you've taken the floor, and they've both been quite long. It's my, yes, thank you very much. I'm going to put some questions, in fact, for each, well, for one or two of you. I just have one question. Let's say it's just after the referendum on Brexit, and we heard that the aviation sector wants out of the Brexit, and do you have any news? Is the aviation sector going to be given any special treatment? Then specifically, Mr. Walsh, you said, would like to see an agreement between the EU and the UK that's supposed to be better than the US-EU agreement, I can imagine that, but what about Canada as well? So then another question for you. It's a matter of selling tickets a year in advance, as Mr. Kennedy said, or what is being referred to, I don't buy a ticket year in advance. Mr. O'Leary, you seem to think it's all very entertaining, that Brexit isn't any big deal, but I have two questions for you. One, would you be able to jump in at short notice if one had no uncertainty by January twenty nineteen? Would that do the trick? And you were saying that the UK in any event should stay within the open sky. Do you have any ideas as to how that might be achieved? Now, Mr. Kennedy, and you said, selling tickets a year early, what percentage of what you sell is sold an hour earlier? Just to know how much of an impact would it have if there was uncertainty? Mr. Kopp, just a quick comment, because you were saying that we're making bad legislation. We don't do it alone. We do it with the Council and the Commission, because that's, I think, that led to Brexit, that everything comes, everything bad comes from Brussels, and the good stuff is homemade. The question for you, what does Brexit mean for Lufthansa? Do you have any figures as to the impact? And Mr. Pastlautner, finish off here. You said twenty-one billion loss in the tourism industry, is that just in relation to the UK, or what are you referring to? And then secondly, you also say that people book a year, year and a half in advance. What kind of percentage figures does that cover? Thank you, Ms. Foster. Mr. Kramer, for the Greens? Yes, thank you, Mr. Kopp. You said, we need fair trade. You're quite right, but that's not the case at present. We have different fees at different airports, and for some airlines, at the same airport, there are different fees. It's anything but fair. And then there's competition for subsidies. And do you think that Brexit is going to change that? That there might be a better terms and fairer terms of trade? And Ryanair, for instance, you can't go to Denmark. You don't fly there anymore, because you don't comply with Danish labor standards. So if you could comment on that. And then Gibraltar, that's going to play a key role. Here, it's been holding us back when it comes to all kinds of rules and regulations, when it comes to passenger rights, for instance. Do you think, once Brexit happens, that once, that means Gibraltar is, Gibraltar is out of the picture, that we'll have better conditions in Europe? We've seen that a lot of regional airports are loss makers. We should follow Canada's example, they have higher fees and they don't lose money. Maybe the fact that it's the taxpayer who's chipping in for these airports, that's, can't be right. Thank you, Ms. Klune.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank all the speakers for their contributions this afternoon. In fact, it's probably a very positive hearing on the benefits of the EU as a whole, although we had had the discussion prior. I just liked, I just, one question, really, I think, probably a general question that I'm looking at. I mean, we've had, I think, Mr. Walsh, you laid out all the required, what we do need, air agreements, air transport agreements, similar, but more open, EU twenty-seven flexibilities in the air, need to find a way to remain part of the, of EASA. Exactly, that's exactly it, that's exactly what we want. I'd just like to know from anybody who would like to answer the question, what kind of communications have you had with the UK side and with Mr. Barney's team as well? I mean, it's very important, the contribution you're giving today, and I'm sure there's many listening here, and feet will be feeding back from this hearing today, but can you give an insight into, particularly from the UK, what exactly do they want? Because we all know the ideal way forward, but is that in their thinking at all?
Thank you, Ms. Klune. Any requests for the floor from S and D? One minute. Thank you, Chairman. Yes. So thank you all for that information and your explanations. Just like you, I'm saddened about Brexit, but there you go, that's it. So we've got to negotiate, both of us, Europe and the UK. We know it's going to be tough to come to a political agreement, and there's got to be an overall agreement, there's no agreement at all. So let's say that by two thousand nineteen, we don't have an agreement, will there still be flights in and out of the UK with just higher ticket prices? Are there going to be technical restrictions of any kind? Question number two, Europe has invested a lot in regional airports. Do you think a hard Brexit could have an impact on regional airports? I'm thinking in particular that there could be higher fees and charges at regional airports for flights to the UK. And what do you think about the legislation as regards labor standards or capitalization in Europe? Or Mr. O'Leary, what about intercontinental flights that you're planning to get going from Europe? Ms. Ayutu, for one minute?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Well, with regard to the pessimism that seems to reign supreme here, and Mr. Lewis' entertaining approach, can't help wondering, when it comes to those terrific prices you have at Ryanair, I mean, that's because of certain shortcomings when it comes to labor and other standards. And you go on saying you're Irish and that you can live with Brexit, but the problem is that the ownership will, after Brexit, no longer be mainly European. So are you hoping that in the course of negotiations, the UK will keep the access to open sky? Are you confident that it'll be the eight six eight and the forty-nine percent ownership will kick in? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear the answers now. So let's take them in the order that you initially followed. So we'll start with Mr. Walsh, please.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for your questions. You'll be pleased to know that Michael is not always right, and his projections about the situation post Brexit is not one that I will share. I fully believe that the UK will remain connected to the rest of Europe, and that the rest of Europe, the EU twenty-seven, will remain connected to the UK. I believe it's in the interests of all consumers that that is the case. I believe it's in the interest of Europe that that is the case. And quite honestly, I believe it's in the interest of Ryanair that that is the case as well. Like a number of people here, I would hate to see a situation where Ryanair is unable to operate flights from the UK to the EU twenty-seven, in the same way as I would hate to see the case where EasyJet is unable to continue to operate flights within the EU twenty-seven. Aviation has been a huge contributor to the success of Europe, both the UK and the EU twenty-seven, and I believe going forward will continue to be the case. But we do need certainty, and we need that certainty sooner rather than later. We are making the same comments to the UK government as I've made here today. We are being clear with the UK government, where we believe they need to focus in relation to aviation. We believe that this is an issue that can be addressed in a simple and constructive fashion. And I remain optimistic that we will see a resolution to the challenges that we face, and that Ryanair will continue to fly between the UK and the rest of Europe. And as much as I admire Michael, I do disagree with him, and disagree with him strongly on this. I'm also confident that the structures that have been put in place many years ago to address the complexity of ownership and control, which have been tested in many countries around the world, will remain valid. I believe those structures, however, are unnecessary, and I would prefer to see a situation whereby we don't have to replicate those structures to facilitate a situation where we're flying within Europe. But if it needs to be done, well, then we will do that, and we will continue, as IAG, to comply with all rules and regulations, and would hope that a way will be found forward to see the UK remain as a significant contributor and a benefactor of the work that EASA does. And I think it's important to point that out. EASA has been a significant contributor to the improvement in air safety across Europe, both within the EU twenty-seven and the UK. And as somebody who has spent his life in aviation, I would hope that that continues to be the case going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, thanks for having kept it short. Mr. O'Leary?
With a couple of questions as they came up. To Vim de Kamp, bilaterals will not be a fallback option. I don't believe that any individual European country will be allowed to negotiate a bilateral with the UK. The twenty-seven will either stick together, or the whole thing will fall apart. Will UK citizens need visas in a hard Brexit? Yes, they'll need visas, but I wouldn't worry about it, because there won't be any flights, not just Ryanair. BA won't be flying between the UK and Europe in a hard Brexit outcome. And if Ms. Foster doesn't begin to address the reality of this, this delusional attitude in London, that it'll be all right on the night, because a deal will get done. There isn't a mechanism for the UK to do a deal. There's nobody in the UK government that has a clue how to do a deal. They don't even know what the hell it is they want, other than they want to leave ECJ jurisdiction. There is no plan, it's your party, and I suggest you talk to them. The German lady, there will be no special treatment for aviation. I apologize most sincerely if you think I take Brexit lightly. I think Brexit is going to be one of the great economic suicide notes in history. I think it's a shambles. The UK will suffer hugely, Europe will suffer a couple of years of negative growth, it will be very bad for our industry. But yes, we, because we operate flexible assets, we can move aircraft out of the UK. I think there will be a disruption to flights from April nineteen onwards. I don't think the disruption will last for very long, it will be a couple of months before the British people understand that they don't all want to go on holidays in Ireland or in Scotland, and I think the British government will be forced to come to its senses. Mr. Kramer, I, you know, I love you dearly, but you're as delusional as usual, I'm afraid. Not alone do we fly to Denmark, we're the fastest-growing airline in Denmark, we've gone from nowhere to the number three airline in Copenhagen in eighteen months. We have also accounted for almost a hundred percent of Copenhagen's growth in the last two years. The reason we don't base aircraft in Denmark is because there's some bizarre Danish model that allows SAS unions to blockade our aircraft and our passengers, despite the fact that our people and our passengers do not support the activities by Danish unions. But if secondary picketing is allowed in Denmark, and Europe does nothing about that kind of industrial terrorism, then shame on you. But don't worry, we're growing very rapidly in Denmark, and the Danes can't get enough of our low fares. Dear Dr. Klune, yes, there is communications with the UK government. I'm sorry to report that they haven't a bull's notion what they're doing. They generally seem to think there's going to be a red, white and blue Brexit, but when you ask them how the hell you're going to get there, they haven't a clue. And as I said, one of their ministers suggests that the way of replacing open skies between the UK and Europe is an open skies agreement with Pakistan. There will be a lot of Pakistanis who'd like to travel to the UK. I'm not quite sure all those Brits who like to holiday in Spain, Portugal and Greece fancy Karachi for their summer holidays. Mr. Baye, if there is no deal, there will be no deal, there will be no flights. There is not a mechanism, the problem is there is not a legal mechanism on which the airlines can operate in a hard Brexit, no-deal outcome. So there's no prospect of having some kind of higher prices at airports or airlines for flights to the UK. There will simply be no flights. Either there is open skies, or there's a bilateral, and if there isn't one or the other, there will be no flights for a period of weeks and months. Labor standards remain, I'm pleased to say, very high in Ryanair, high pay, great raw Labour standards remain, I'm pleased to say, very high in Ryanair, high pay, great rosters. We have about five thousand pilots and cabin crew on a waiting list who want to join us, many of them whom are presently striking within Lufthansa, Alitalia and BA, where there are admittedly low standards of labour among the legacy carriers. And the last question, ownership post Brexit is a real issue for the Italian lady. Not much for Ryanair. About twenty percent of our shareholders currently are UK. We are engaged in a continuing share buyback. In fact, it might help me to accelerate my share buyback if the UK shareholders are forced to sell. Do I hope the UK will keep open skies access? I absolutely do. I hope the UK will reverse the decision on Brexit. And I think when they begin to realise come September, October twenty eighteen, that there's no more cheap flights. In fact, there's no flights to Spain, Portugal and Italy in summer nineteen. Maybe the average British voter who doesn't really understand passporting of financial services, doesn't understand Euratom, but they do understand that they want to go on cheap holidays to Spain, Portugal, Italy and Greece, will begin to understand that they were misled and sold a pub by the Brexiteers in the referendum last year, and they will change their minds. We should be optimistic. The Brits, I believe, will change their minds because it's going to get very bad for them the next six or eight months, I hope.
Thank you very much, Mr O'Leary. Mr Crop, you're next. Sorry, Mr Kennedy. Go ahead, head.
I was going to speak to the issue that Mr Van der Kamp raised, and it's echoes of it were raised by others, which is what happens under the existing bilaterals? If there is a, if there's a hard Brexit, if on day one there is no agreement, to what extent do these bilaterals, after they're dusted off in the nineteen forties and fifties and sixties, what level of service do they provide? There are two major limitations. One is that they were written in the forties, fifties and sixties. A lot of them specify specifically what carriers can be served, can serve the markets. So a number of airlines that are before you here may not have been around during that period. So you're certainly going to see fewer choice for consumers. Second, in the forties, fifties and sixties, there are far fewer flights, far fewer frequencies between those two countries. So it'd be much more restrictive on that front. But third, and this is really the important part for us on the American side, the joint ventures that we have, that airlines have with KLM, with Lufthansa, with British Air, which would be relevant on that one, but would be, they end. The legal foundation assumes that there is an open skies agreement, meaning I arrived here in Brussels through Frankfurt on Lufthansa. I flew to, well, let me back up. If you fly through Heathrow and then connect on a European carrier, that is a venture between the US carrier and the European carrier. It is one that they have antitrust immunity, they're able to coordinate on scheduling so that they are convenient to passengers. Your bags go seamlessly, they're transferred at Heathrow. When I mentioned that fifty percent of Heathrow traffic is going on to the EU twenty seven, it's because of those joint ventures, at least from the US perspective. So that ends on day one. Question was raised on what would the impact be on small and regional, on small and midsize airports? Again, from the US perspective, there is not a lot of direct service from the United States cities to small and midsize airports. It's a hub and spoke system. And what we do is we generally get traffic to Heathrow, then they move with another carrier through a joint venture, and that carrier brings the American tourist, American businessman to a smaller midsize community. So we think it would have a huge impact on small and midsize communities, at least from an American perspective, because it makes it that much harder on day one to bring those people in.
Thank you very much. Mr Thomas Crop has the floor now.
Yes. When it comes to what the US Speaker just said, well, of course, when there's these negotiations, of course, the way that you can fly in from one European city to another, it'd be great if we could fly from New York to Chicago as a European airline as well. So this seventy percent figure when it comes to America first, US ownership, we have fifty. We would also like to loosen that up, but seventy five percent that you have in the States, that's a lot. Now, Mr Van der Kamp was wondering whether this would have an impact on fares as a result of Brexit. I thought I'd covered that. Well, let's just hope we come up with some kind of measure transitional if necessary. But the second question was, there's all kinds of point to point carriers. Eij, Norwegian, they fly around within Europe. Then there's also plenty of others. Whizzair in Eastern Europe, then Eurovenz, France, Carilem also has point to point VR. So there's incredible competition. And what I've understood is that Ryanair is still this, an Irish carrier and still can move around even after Brexit. Then with regard to what Jacqueline Foster said, just touched on this, there's a parallel discussion when it comes to new rules for fair trade. It's not a matter of protectionism. It's airlines that have nothing to do with Brexit. But for instance, in the Gulf, there are small countries with, they've got those enormous fleets, no right to strike, none of the labour standards we have, and we have to compete with them. So there should be rules when the EU enters into agreements with these people, that there's a level playing field. We're not in the WTO as airlines. We have to rely to the tune of one hundred percent on these airline agreements. It would be different. Automotive industry, the others, they're playing according to different rules. Now, Ms Meissner, you said that, I said bad legislation. No. What I meant is there's legislation that we don't love, but that we have to enforce and comply with. And to see to it that when it comes to the single market, of course, that are worked out by the Commission and the Council are complied with. Sometimes it's tough going and it's expensive, but everybody should play by the rules. Then Mr Kramer, once again, you stress the need for fairness. Just to say that we've got a problem. If we want to sell cheaper tickets, kerosene prices don't go down. We've heard that the fees at airports are going up and apparently there is some discounts for some, but where we can save and must is when it comes to staff. We employ a hundred thousand people in the EU and it can't just be at their expense. So we want competitive pricing, but our staff have to be able to live on what they make. And that's something we're going to go on fighting for. Level playing field and a fair playing field. Thank you very much. I'm going to wind up with Mr Fasslack. Now, please.
On the visa question, we look at this more from the perspective of our UK staff, so staff mobility. So the question is, will they require visas when we post them all over Europe for their destinations, for the destination services that they contribute to our company? No, no. I agree with you.
Comments of Mike, sorry.
So we look at this from the economic perspective and our own staff, but in terms of tourism, obviously, this is also a political issue, whether you want the fast track procedure for certain countries. So for me, it's a bit too early to comment on that now. But in terms of the, our own assessment, it's more about the economic part, which deals with our own staff.
Frau Meissner.
Ms Meissner, the question about the potential loss. Well, the study that we commissioned showed that there's twenty one billion euros loss in tourism spending within the EU twenty seven, that it could reach that figure since UK tourists will no longer be visiting the EU countries in question. Then when it comes to bookings, it's not that people book eighteen months in advance, even though they do book earlier and earlier. But we go ahead with looking at capacities, airports, airlines, hotels, et cetera. Our business plans have to be crafted eighteen months in advance.
Thank you very much. We will, of course, before you go, listen to a representative of Airbus, and I'll give you the floor back for one minute each. So I'm delighted to have Natalie Arar with us from Airbus. You've got the same speaking time as each of the others, between five and seven minutes, seven minutes. Thank you.
Parliament, thank you for this invitation, providing me the opportunity to complement the picture given by our customers and the airport with the European manufacturer view. Airbus is often used as a symbol of success of industrial European integration because we capture fifty percent of the worldwide market, because we were able to grow, provide technology, innovation, jobs in Europe. However, one has to understand our industrial model. Our wings of commercial aircraft are manufactured in the UK, our fuselage in Germany, our tails in Spain, and our nose and the centre wing box of our aircraft in France. Therefore, our success, our worldwide success, dispends very much on the free movement of people and products travelling seamlessly across borders. And this is what makes our competitiveness on the worldwide stage. On top of our ability to export, those are key drivers of the jobs and the sales we're providing for Europe. If we focus on the UK, the UK obviously plays a very important place in our manufacturing footprint, in space and defence. But for the commercial aircraft I've just mentioned, all our wings are manufactured in North Wales, its buttons. And therefore, without the UK, Airbus will be a bus and not an aircraft. So UK has always been very important. We directly employ fourteen thousand people, indirectly one hundred thousand. We have four thousand companies supplying us in the UK and a lot of interesting technology and research topics going on in the UK. You have to imagine that those parts can cross the channel several times. So we really need eighty thousand business trips a year, and we really need this seamless way to work on our different parts of the product. What about Brexit? Well, I mean pragmatically, we, you know that Airbus publicly lobbied against the Brexit at the time of the referendum, and it was not because of ideology, it was for common business sense, I would say. Because we're competing on the worldwide stage. So the long term competitiveness of our different sites across Europe are very important to us. We're competing against the US today, and the day after tomorrow we'll compete against China. So it's very important to preserve this cost aspect. I have only five minutes, so let me concentrate on the headlines of our key topics, which at that stage are more questions than answers, because we don't really know how the Brexit will unfold. The first key topic is the movement of staff. As I said, we need to rapidly have people working on different parts. So how to dispatch rapidly an expert, being an Airbus employee from the UK or being a UK supplier of Rolls Royce, for example, for the engine, if we have a problem across the channel? That needs to be quick and that needs to happen efficiently. That's the first element. On top, obviously, of the whites of our expatriate, we have one thousand nine hundred people, EU to UK or UK to EU, that obviously we need to take care of. So that's the first question on the agenda. The second big topic for us, which is very concerning, is about the checks at the border and the regulatory divergence. Because we are sending parts and components across borders, we obviously have an interest not to have tariffs on customs. Here, and that's a big difference with the airlines, we have some solution, EU solution, UK solution, and potentially a WTO agreement that we could rely on to alleviate the tariff impact. But for us, the industry, what is really concerning is the non tariff impact. Because checks at borders can be very problematic for us, for our competitiveness, for the delivery on time. Can you imagine having a wing or lots of wings stuck at the borders and we're not able to deliver to our customer on the timeline we agreed with them? That would be a huge issue for us. Even if there would be a customs union like agreement that would solve the customs checks at borders, we would still have some issues with the checks at border regarding regulation and in particular environment. So how do we make sure that those checks are done in a very efficient manner? This is another topic to work on. We spoke already about EASA and the importance of EASA for our sector. Obviously, we don't want any divergence on regulation, on safety and certification that probably requires some flexibility on the other side as well, because it's not only about convergence of regulation. Obviously, we need some enforcement mechanism that goes hand in hand. We cannot have one and not the other. So that's another important topic we need to work on. So those are very crucial topics on our competitiveness. And then we have a third stream that I would call the partnership aspect. We partner with the UK industry in space. For example, we have a subsidiary on Galileo, providing components to Germany or HB. Are we going to call an end to those partnerships? We work closely with our UK supply chain on very interesting topics in the European research, like Caesar and Clean Sky. How do we make sure that this partnership can continue? So as you can see, to sum up and put it in a nutshell, we need an agreement. We would be very bad without agreement. And there is still a lot of uncertainty on those specifics of this agreement. And this is very important for us to be able to compete on the worldwide stage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll open this up for a debate straight away. You have one minute for your question. I shall be draconian. You have the floor.
I'll be putting my question in German. Aviation mostly consists or is based on trust, primarily the trust of customers. And my question is, you've all carefully tried to be optimistic, but here and there it has come through that the greatest optimist can become full of doubt as a result of this Brexit and that this deadline of March twenty nineteen, it cannot be met, that there'll be no agreement by then. So this is my question. Now, I'm sure you're going to try and ensure that this trust remains, and you're going to have guarantees for that. Is there an opportunity to do that? And when it comes to insurance, will insurance companies not be the greatest beneficiaries of Brexit?
Thank you, Mr Riqueno.
Thank you, Madame Chair. I've got three thoughts to express, having heard what everybody's had to say. The first point is, the panel, the representatives of airports said that Brexit couldn't be seen as a political issue. Unfortunately, it is a political issue, and in this case, the economy is suffering from politics. And my impression from them, what the panel said as a whole, was that there's a bit of panic underway. Nobody's got a clear idea of what's going to happen, nor what solutions to respond with. My second comment, I would quote Mrs May, Brexit is Brexit. I cannot conceive of any other political proposal now, particularly if we bear in mind our good habit in Europe of saying that nothing is agreed until everything is agreed. The bottom line from all of that, Brexiteers, you don't meet many anymore. Many around here, there must be some still. But the bottom line is clearly the cliff effect. And I don't think, from what I've heard, that the cliff effect is receding. I think it's just around the cliff. I think it's just around the corner. Thank you very much. Mrs. Anderson, one minute.
We're very proud of Airbus, as the UK and as part of Europe. I think it's an amazing success story, so welcome. I flagged out some of the issues initially earlier, but I did want to ask you specifically about what you feel the impact is also in relation to research and development impact, in terms of all the European funding programs, and more widely, and also, the harmonious industrial relations framework at European level. So, European Works Council, social dialogue committees, and the way that that works at the moment are the advantage of everyone, both employers and workers and unions. And then, more widely, in terms of, you flagged up the issue of what you do about your expats and freedom of movement, and I think that's incredibly important. And a number of us are incredibly concerned with the way things are going, in terms of the UK government's handling of the situation, and the fact that EU citizens' rights are not going to be fully protected. There are major issues about family reunion, which is going to be a huge concern for people in terms of certainty, and also, the continuing excuse that is being used, that immigrants of all types are having a very difficult time. There's a rise in racism and xenophobia, and that affects everyone's workforce. So, if you could comment a bit on those issues, that would be great.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Anderson. Last speaker in this section will be Mr. Gaylor.
Yes, I have one question to Ms. Arar. After having listened to you, the following conclusion came to mind. If everything is so uncertain whether production chains can be maintained with the United Kingdom, if it's so uncertain whether employees will be able to fly to and fro, then the logical conclusion would be, we'll move the production chain to the continent. Have you been thinking about that at Airbus?
Thank you for all of your questions. I turn now to Mrs. Arar to answer the questions that have been raised for her, more particularly about research and development. I'd like to ask each of you here, it's very difficult, but we're accustomed to this sort of thing here, with one minute each, expressing what message you'd like to put across to us. You're the economic protagonists, protagonists in economic terms. It's hard, but we'd like to hear your message. You have the floor.
To comment on what's going to happen on research and expatriate and citizen rights, because we need an agreement first. So, as long as we don't know on which basis the negotiation will unfold, it's quite difficult to comment. Normally, you could figure out a way to have the UK continuing being part of Horizon 2020. As you know, there are precedents, but obviously, as Mr. Riquelme recalled, there is a political dimension to that discussion. And since nothing is agreed until everything is agreed, what is going to be the outcome of that discussion? So, everything is very much in flux. I cannot possibly comment on what the ultimate proposal from the UK will be on our EU expatriates. The negotiations are just starting. Obviously, we are lucky now, because people focus on their work and common projects. This is what makes Airbus work every day. So, I think the political questions have been aside for a while, but of course, politicians need to find an agreement, so otherwise, we're all going to be in trouble. So, to answer your question about how to deal with uncertainty, and should we plan for a very short-term switch of activities, moving our UK facilities to the continent, Mr. Gaylor, we are long cycle. We are in a period where we don't know what the political outcome will be. Of course, we'll look at the long-term competitiveness of our different sites at the end of the day, including the UK, but I want to emphasize the know-how and the assets that the UK has built over time. And again, as a European, we're not fighting against the UK, we're partnering with the UK to manufacture the best aircraft in the world. So, we want to remain optimists at that stage, but can we be optimists? Of course, the questions behind are very important. And if I may add, they are very important to us, but most probably, even more important for the supply chain, the SMEs, because with a large group, you can cope with a significant investment in IT systems, you can try to adjust your processes. But if really, customs or regulation checks are in this way, and that it creates a lot of disturbance on the production flow, I'm sure that the SMEs are going to suffer the most. And this is where it comes as a matter of concern, especially if the pounds is the one that they are selling in pounds, with a limited ability to hedge themselves. So, as you can see, the replication for the supply chain can be very important.
What about your conclusion, Mrs. Arar? What's your conclusion? Last words for us.
We always thought that remain was a better option, because we live in an integrated European world, so that's probably the best option from a business point of view. However, politicians are in charge, so let's hope now that they find a deal which is the best for the open manufacturing industry and for our customers, the airlines.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Arar. Mr. Goldenen has the floor to conclude now, please. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, for those airports that will still be in Europe and in the single market, the real question is going to be, what's going to be the impact of the outcome of the negotiations on those operators, those carriers that will be leaving the single market, and the impact on the single market of their exit, and the impact on the airlines? Thank you very much, Mr. Tolan, please.
I think four things, just to conclude. One, clearly, Ireland's the most exposed to air connectivity from the EU members after Brexit. Secondly, it's important to remember, we're the most key for the UK, because they lack their own connectivity within the UK in air. Thirdly, just to address the point comprehensively around EASA and ECAC, I absolutely fundamentally believe it must stay intact. It's a critical cornerstone, and common sense should prevail, but I'd like to see it. So, it's not a question of its absolute agreement with Ms. Foster and her remarks. And lastly, I think we just simply need clarity, the how and the when, and it's just not there, whether people like it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, please. You have one minute. What's the message you'd like to put across to us?
Thank you. Aviation is one of the great success stories of the EU, and I'm pleased to say that the United Kingdom has always supported an open, liberal, and deregulated air transport market. So, I think Europe is pushing through an open door. I think we need to embark to agree a liberal, comprehensive air transport agreement between the UK and the EU, retaining all of the significant consumer benefits that have been achieved. And I remain optimistic that that will be achieved going forward. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary.
In opposite view, I think the UK, if it doesn't change its current policy, is heading for a hard Brexit. In a hard Brexit, there will be a disruption to flights between the UK and Europe, not just Ryanair, all flights between the UK and Europe from April 2019 onwards for probably that summer period. The deadline, and I urge you to take away from this, the deadline is not March 2019. The deadline for the airlines is September, October 2018. We will start cancelling flights six months before the March 19. We will not wait until March 2019. And one last point, there was a couple of comments there from Mr. Kramer, and so, regional airports losing money. I give you the way for regional airports to stop losing money is to grow. Charlotte used to have about 20,000 passengers a year and lost money. It now carries about 9 million passengers a year and makes about 40 million euros a year in profits.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
I think the biggest takeaway for us, I've been to many member countries, I've been to the EU offices, UK offices, many people, when they're meeting with the airlines, they view them in the same way that they're looking at other industries, and they say, we don't need to do, I don't want to do, we don't want to discuss a sectoral-based approach right now, we need to do something comprehensive. Our message is simply one of why air travel is unique, not only to your constituencies, but as an industry, the way that we, the way that air service is regulated, the way air service agreements work, and how there is really, again, no fallback position. I really appreciate the Chair for bringing us together. I hope that as you are talking to your counterparts in your member countries, you can reinforce this notion of, we need to be, you need to be very focused on autos, on pharmaceuticals, and other issues, but aviation really has a unique position that needs to be addressed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Krop, now, please.
25 years of the single market, that's a unique success story in air transport. We want that to remain the case. Lufthansa is a private company in Germany, a company that stands for an open market and is against protectionism. Germany advocates this. And if we're going to have a Brexit, then we need regulations to ensure that this open market remains. And I've said on several occasions, for those participants in the open market, the laws that the European Union sets out must apply. There should be no kind of second class. That way, we can find a rapid solution, and I am therefore not unoptimistic that we'll, after long negotiations, come up with a solution. I mean, perhaps, there might be a change of mind, I don't know, in the UK here. I think this is a wonderful opportunity to change things. I mean, hope springs eternal, and Mr. Van der Kamp said Brexit is impossible, and perhaps that's true. I mean, we've seen today that it's very difficult. I know that, you know, there may be other opinions, but hope springs eternal.
Well, thank you. So, certainly, Brexit is a very emotional topic, and that's why we urge to look at it in a very pragmatic way. And then, you will see that Brexit will affect tourism, both in the UK and in the EU27, in a negative way, if there is no deal or a bad deal on aviation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Today's conclusion is that we are not able to reach conclusions, but the European Parliament has played its role, it's given you a sounding board, it's given you the floor, we've been able to discuss our ideas. My conclusion is, if we'd had our guests vote, they'd all have voted in favor of remain. And the arguments that they've put forward are ferociously pro-European. We've heard about single European sky, we've heard about research programs and EASA's role. So, these are things that we're working on every day, and we need to go on defending this European model, which has improved connectivity and travel around Europe. And you can give a huge round of applause, please, to our guests who've stuck to their time and have been, tried very hard to get their viewpoints across to us. We're grateful. Thank you very much to our guests.